Yeah. Is that, help me use my mouse.
Yeah. Uh, good evening, my name is Jeremy Bach. I am a student council advisor in the one, uh, area of Central. Uh, good evening, everyone involved in the Lewis Central School or candidate forum. But I have two years left, so we're on set, candidates, twenty-four, forty-four, and four-year terms on Lewis Central, period, school, board evaluation. A reminder that election day is Tuesday, November the fourth. Rules of the forum act. Each candidate will ask three questions to answer each question. We'll go around, rather fashion, moving left, right across the table. When it needs to be end, we'll come back to your first seat. Timing, uh, we have a student up here in front. Uh, we have thirty seconds remaining, so we'll be outside. Uh, when the signs have hung, your time is expired, please finish your pop. Candidates please see clearly and note the focus without using the hearing as well. We will have a hard time, and we'll say a good deal. After the fifth question, if the time allows, we will take questions from the audience. Write your question on a piece of paper and turn it in at the booth. We will not be taking questions online tonight. If you run out of time, please can I direct you with candidate afterwards to get their contact information. Each candidate now will give a one-minute introduction, starting with your name and your connection to Lewis Central Student, at the school district. I want you to start with Greg Stern.
Where's that? It should go all the way to the top. Where is it?
Hello? All right, my name's Greg Stern, uh, they call me Bubba. Um, I have two girls that went through Lewis Central. Uh, our oldest one graduated, and we still have a freshman in the district. Um, I believe that, I guess I got involved when they started running for the bonds. And I feel like I bring a construction background to the district to make sure that, um, we're getting the best bang for our buck.
I'm Laura Latahoff, and I am with the Lewis Central District. Um, I've been a parent, um, for fourteen years within the district. My daughter's sixteen and in the eleventh grade. Um, and then I also have a first grader at Craft, um, and then a three-year-old that will be a future Titan. And so that is my involvement. Um, I also had a nephew that graduated a few years ago, and so I've been a big supporter of, um, Lewis Central. Um, and then also I've been asked to speak on parent panels, uh, to speak on special education, and to bring in my invol- involvement with that.
My name is Erin Peterson, and I have three children that are currently in the Lewis Central School District, and I also live in the Lewis Central District. Um, I have been on the board for the last four years, and I was always a mom that everyone asked to help volunteer when it came to classroom parties, donations, uh, just being a leader. And I'm here today to try to go for another four.
Uh, good evening, Jeremy Bach. Um, I have four boys, uh, crazy. Uh, one graduated two years ago, um, and then moved on to trade school at Southeast Community College. I then have an eleven-year-old who is currently open enrolled into College View for special education. And I have a nine-year-old who is at Titan Hill in fourth grade, and a almost seven-year-old who is currently at Craft. Um, my foundation really is special education. Uh, I really have a heart for it. Um, when you have a child that special needs, they find a way to pull on your heartstrings and make you look at things differently. So that's my purpose for running.
Hi, I'm Jolene Miller. Um, I've been involved in education for the last thirty-five years as a teacher. My specialty is early childhood. I have a master's degree in early childhood education. My youngest daughter graduated in two thousand thirteen from Lewis Central, and we currently have a second-grade granddaughter who's attending Titan Hill.
Hello, my name is Doreen Shuffle, and, um, I actually am an experienced board member because I have been on the board now for twenty-two years. I have, um, four children that have graduated from Lewis Central. Um, I have, um, grandchildren in the district and one, um, who will be, um, in the special needs program, the special education program. And I am, um, have been volunteering in the district for over thirty-two years with PTA, with Booster Club, with any committee the board, um, wanted me to be on. I, I, I've been, um, involved with the Lewis Central for several years, and, um, I, I know the history.
Good evening, I am Jenny Sandow. Uh, I have four kids, three are currently in the Lewis Central School District, a senior, freshman, first grader, and pre-K. So she will be joining Lewis Central next year. I own and operate a business here in town, which I believe, um, you know, the financial responsibility and having the background in business and all of that makes me a great candidate for, um, school board. And I'm running because I love the community that we have, and I want to be a part of keeping it growing and being a great place for my kids to grow up in.
Okay, starting with question one, let's start with Jeremy Bach. What are your top two priorities as a school board member?
Make sure you can hear me in both. So, when I look at my top two priorities, I look at infrastructure and special education. Uh, let me first start with infrastructure. I think that the district has moved in the right direction. I believe that the bond that we received last year has helped make improvements, um, that were necessary. The only concern I have and one plan that I would put into place is a five, ten, and twenty-year, um, infrastructure plan, where the school district continues to look at the infrastructure of the schools, the facilities, to make sure that we don't run into the same situations we run into this time. Um, when I look at the schools in general, uh, they had gone way past dilapidation. Um, when one room is sixty degrees and the next room is eighty, that makes for a very difficult environment for a child to learn in. So I'm grateful we're moving in a right direction, but I want to make sure that that direction stays in place, um, and that we have a plan for the future. The next piece, uh, would be special education. Um, I want to make sure that we work with leadership and teachers to improve the current stigma that Lewis Central has on it. It's kind of been an overshadowing stigma for many years, um, even clear back to when I was in high school at Abraham Lincoln. Um, it was, it was fairly known that special education was a little bit of a struggle for the district, and that's something that I strongly would like to improve. Um, I want to look for ways to collaborate with other schools within the district and the state, um, to improve overall testing scores for those with IEPs. Um, I don't believe... Two minutes goes fast.
That's, uh, your vote for the left.
I would say my top two priorities as a board member, um, would be the fiscal responsibility. And, um, to touch base on that, in the last four years, we have improved our unspent budget, which is our emergency fund, from a hundred sixty thousand dollars to three point five million dollars. To me, that's a significant savings. It shows that the board that we currently have absolutely pays attention to how we're spending our money. And with that said, I do want to publicly thank our community and stakeholders for recognizing that we had a need to pass the bond that we just passed. Um, like he was saying, it's important that we keep our buildings updated, and some of them were too far gone. And knowing that the bond passed and that we had the support from our community and stakeholders, even if your kids weren't in the district, it really was a significant, I would say, impact of, and it was much needed. So we are absolutely thankful for people supporting us in that regard. Number two, I would say, for, um, importance, it would be the student-teacher's success. It's important, as a board member, to continue to focus on our policies that ensures all students have access to high-quality education and resources, um, and along with supports of systems, promote successful learning environments. Um, it's also important to recognize and acknowledge the need for strong policies for our teachers. They're just as important as our kids, and without supporting them with the policies, then we don't have the most positive working environment. So making sure that the policies we currently have are up to date, um, I think that will absolutely help us be successful in the district.
Just a quick reminder that we save the two minutes, please respect student with cards. Just a reminder that the yellow card will be held up for thirty seconds remaining, and if anyone wants to stop, this allows us to ensure all of the party.
Okay, the, the top two priorities, um, I feel we need to work on as the Lewis Central School Board, um, is to get teachers and paraeducators involved where they want to be. Um, I recently, over the summer, spoke at, um, the para-education, um, training that they had going on, and I was on a parent panel here. And, um, I got a lot of feedback and, um, actually cheers in the audience when I mentioned having paraeducators be part of the IEP. Uh, most of the paraeducators that work with the special education students do so on a one-on-one basis. And with that, they're, they are the person who knows that student the best. I would say they know them better than the teacher. And so currently, the paraeducator is not in on that team meeting for the IEP. And I feel having them getting involved would, um, help set goals for that student and help them reach those goals. Um, the second priority I have would be to enhance the special education department, um, or inclusion with that. And so with that, as an example, we had the trunk-or-treat, um, not too long ago, and they offered a sensory-friendly, um, environment a half hour before it started, which is a great offering, and I'm so happy they do that. Um, however, I feel that should be offered at all activities. Um, it's not even just the special education department or students that would need that. Um, it's people with mental health disorders, people maybe who have a problem being in large crowds. Um, just to get that extra time, say, before, um, a prom or dance, or even to getting that extra time before, um, donuts with your parents at Craft. Um, it would allow the students, um, to just feel more comfortable in their environment.
All right, I guess my, uh, top two, uh, priorities, number one is safety. I want every parent, teacher, staff, and student to always feel safe, uh, when you are in our buildings. I want parents to be able to drop their kids off and feel like we are protecting and providing a safe and nurturing environment where the students can focus on academics as well as social skills for the future. We have made several safety improvements over the last year to ensure every student is protected and reh- returns home to talk about their day at Lewis Central. And the second one is education, the core to every school for every student. Through collaborating and setting policies on high expectations and leadership with our exceptional teachers, uh, through strength or strategic planning and adjusting to give our students the tools to succeed in the future.
Okay, so my top two priorities as a board member. So I intend to be an advocate for students, educators, administrators, and our community in maintaining and growing our current culture and academic opportunities that we current ha- currently have. I think the biggest part of that is not only, I think we, we provide surveys to students and parents, and I think those are all wonderful. I think it also entails being in front of the people, top to bottom, whether that is our bus drivers, anybody that's in the building, maintenance, teachers, and everybody else, just to make sure that they're all getting what it is that they need from our educational system, and they're also just being a staff and part of it. I also believe that retaining and recruiting excellent and high-quality teachers is extremely important. Uh, evaluating their, um, compensation packages and looking at creative ways to benefit them. It doesn't always have to be in compensation, we all love that, obviously. But I think that sometimes budgeting can, can hinder some of those things. So I think that there's always ways to evaluate that and make sure that everybody within the building is, is being satisfied and wanting to come back and enjoy their job every day.
Okay, it's hard to narrow down two priorities because everything's a priority. More mental health support, school safety, bullying, that's just to name a few. Narrowing down to two, from my experience on the board, the number one priority for Lewis Central is and should be academics, student learning. A test is only one day in the life of a student, but seeing the da- data showing the progress and growth of a student, especially if their learning is more than a year's growth in a school year. That is success. Included in this is a focus, um, in working to close the gap of the, of proficiency between the regular education students and the, um, students in subgroups. We need to continue academics being the number one priority at Lewis Central, along with increasing the rigor of our curriculum for each student, no matter what level they are at. And then right now, number two is fiscally being responsible to our LC community, which includes the buildings and a campus that is safe for students from getting injured. Have safety features installed like door sensors and secured entrances, along with providing a good learning and work environment for students and staff. From rising costs, change in leadership here at Lewis Central, we saw our savings dwindle. We now have three point five million in reserves to ensure to keep Lewis Central open if the economic, uh, economy fails. We raised our emergency funds all while, while raising all staff wages, providing insurance options for paras, increasing staff, increasing programs and classes, and having one of the lowest tax levies in the state of Iowa.
Well, my first and foremost, um, priority, as it should be with anyone, um, working on a school board, is to make sure that every child has the absolute best education that they can get in a safe environment, because the student should always be the number one priority. My second priority would be the staff. Reality right now is that we are facing a huge teacher shortage in America. And so you have to be extremely competitive, and it's not just wages. I want Lewis Central to be a place that is known throughout the state of Iowa as an excellent place to come and teach. I want the teachers to be respected as professionals and love coming to work every day. Because as a teacher, that is more important to me than wages. I will take a lower-paying job if I am respected as a professional and I'm free to work with my kids and do the best that I can for my kids every day in a safe environment.
Okay, we have a question to start with, just now. What ideas do you have for saving communities for all students, whether you're an academic, art, athletics, or career in technical education?
Sure. So I believe I remember at freshman orientation this year, Mr. Vincattle shared the, um, extensive list of extracurricular opportunities that were available, and I believe we are one of the highest in the state, which I think is amazing. Um, I believe that that allows for so much opportunity for our students to flourish if they are taking the time to find those avenues. Uh, I believe that, I feel it is my responsibility as a parent to provide my kids necessary life skills as they grow up and become adults. But I do think I would, I would love to have more options available in regards to, um, job preparation, um, being able to get out in the community and potentially find professional mentors that our kids can, um, collaborate with and just be a part of and better understand what it is that maybe they want to do once they get out of, out of high school. I feel like those are, um, some opportunities that I would like to see.
Lewis Central needs to continue what we have been doing. It's not focusing on one category, but we need to provide what we can do for all students in all categories. Academics, college credit courses, more rigor in our curriculum for all students. Arts, that's why we finished this, this auditorium. Um, we finished it, uh, twen- uh, we finished our twenty-year plan and built the high school auditorium, which was twenty-five years after the high school was built, because we kept putting funds to other things in the district that, that were needed. Athletics, provide more room and safe facilities to lessen the chance of our students getting hurt. Career and technical education, seeking grants, donors, partners, programs, STEM classes, and opportunities to increase the offerings for our students. Changing from trimester to semester increased the Iowa Western on-campus student attendees from seventeen in two thousand twenty-five to fifty-five in two thousand twenty-four. We have a welding program now which has a hundred and thirty students participating. We hired a college and career readiness counselor at the high school. We added staff in elementary music, art, high school band, also staff for English language learners and special education. We expanded sports in seventh grade, high school girls wrestling, and have added coaches. We need our LC board to keep moving LC forward for all students.
So when I first saw this question, my first thought was, wow, I think they have a lot of really good things already in place, extracurriculars, programs. Um, so I did a little investigating to see what might be some areas of need. And what I found looking on the, uh, BOEE website in the state of Iowa is that LC is significantly below the state average for work-based programs, so technical programs. So that's an area I think probably should be expanded to give a lot more, um, at, different kinds of opportunities to kids in different kinds of trades. Trades are needed, and a lot of kids aren't going to go to college, and it'd be wonderful if they could have those experiences in high school to help them choose a career that'll last them a lifetime. Another thing I would like to see expanded is summer school opportunities for kids, um, special education kids, programs for kids who are what we call in Council West, bubble kids, who are almost where they need to be, but need that little extra oomph to get them over the edge so they can be achieving. And also enrichment programs for kids, so they have something fun, creative to do during the summer.
Okay. So for me, trade programs actually are huge. My family actually has been in construction almost my entire life. It skipped this generation, I can't swing a hammer. Um, that's okay, everybody else can. Um, I do think that Lewis Central has made some steps in the right direction as it relates to trade programs, and skills work. But I believe that we could do more outreach with other colleges, um, not even if it's in the state of Iowa. Um, Southeast Community College probably has one of the best trade schools there is in the state of Nebraska. Yes, they're not in Iowa, yes, they're not at Iowa Western, but they're phenomenal with students. And so I don't think we should just segment ourselves to just here, we should outreach to other areas. We should prepare students earlier, and this is not going to be popular, not necessarily for college readiness, because not everybody wants to go to a four-year college. Maybe trade is the direction for them. So I think that that's huge to bring in companies like Hawkins, Keywit, other organizations that can come in and explain what they do, work with the students, um, tenth grade would be my idea, to be honest. Um, so that's one piece. I don't know how many of you remember growing up, learning the President's and the song that was associated with it. Fine arts are huge, and I believe could be used to support curriculum in unique ways, to help students learn material. Um, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. We need to find unique ways that work for everyone. What works for me may not work for Erin. And so we need to continue to look at the best ways for everyone.
Um, I would, I'd like to kind of touch base on what was already said, but I do feel the same when it comes to the trades. That is something that I would like to see us expand on. Um, with our CTE program that we, um, specifically with the welding program, we started in twenty twenty-four, I think that's one of the best programs we could have done. Um, selfishly, my boys really want to be welders and engineers, and so when I found out that we were adding that, it was very exciting. So, and also with that said, not everybody is meant for college. Trade schools are just as good, and we have a big shortage nationally. So encouraging students and helping find pathways to get them to that will help us absolutely be successful, obviously within a district, but then it helps them become, contributes to society. So, you know, when I was a, a high schooler, I wanted to be an electrician, but we didn't have a program. have a program like that where I went to school, so I obviously didn't choose that route. So, I do, I think that expanding on our trades programs will be a big help for kids that don't want to go to the four-year colleges like they do traditionally. I think we also can collaborate more. I'm not, I think the Pace Art Center and, you know, collaborating with local artists would be fabulous, so kids that are really into the finance or the arts, that is something that we can tap into more, because we are creating more opportunity here in Council of Love's for that specifically, so.
So, when I look at this question, I really see the emphasis of all students, and as has been touched on, you know, we do have lots of extracurriculars, we do have a lot of sports, but one thing I would like to get started or add it here is the Unified Sports Program. It would be a win-win for all, honestly, all students. It's a program that, it would be a partnership with the Special Olympics, and it is getting students with special needs involved with general population students. They work, you know, one-on-one, and they learn the sport. So, rather than only having Special Olympics with three activities, you know, currently it's bowling, track and field, and basketball, but say a special education student is interested in cheerleading, or say they're interested in football. I know my daughter wanted to do cheerleading, so I had reached out to the coach when she was starting high school, and to get her involved in that would have been me required to go to practices, learn the cheers, go over the cheers with her. And so, just getting a unified program where the peers work one-on-one with the students to teach them that sport, to get them involved in different activities that they may be interested in, it would be a great program, and it's a win-win, like I said, for a student maybe wanting to attend college, or maybe wanting to join student council. Many times, you need volunteer activities, and that would be a great way to earn those type of volunteer hours.
I'm going to hop on the welding thing and just give a shout-out to them, because I think that program is great. I think it's really leading a lot of students in the right direction that wasn't available three years ago, two years ago, so I will hop on that bandwagon real quick, just to give them a shout-out. But as a board member, it's my job to adapt and grow our programs aligned with our students' interests. I would like our new conference to expand into arts and academics both. How about a conference art show, or at bare minimum, a citywide art show, as well as maybe a brain bowl? I will support all the extracurricular activities. I feel they keep students more engaged with the school while building friendships that last a lifetime. There's nothing better than the rush of accomplishment when your top score is received, and you get to celebrate that with your friends. I was a member of the TJ band, and the feeling of putting on that uniform, from the looks you get from pulling up to a competition, the presence that you demand being in a parade, or maybe it's just the roar of the crowd at a Friday night football game. Every aspect shows pride, dedication, and loyalty to your school and community.
Question, starting with Laura Lappoff. We have a strong history of academic achievement. What's the success we can ensure we can all maintain, but we continue to elevate student learning outcomes for all students?
Sure, so I think it's important that we keep up with the times, and with that, to make sure policies and curriculum are consistently evaluated, to keep up with the other population, the other districts. And with that, I also feel we need a more inclusive work environment, not every student can sit at a desk and take a test, or sit at a desk and do their work. So, maybe working with the students, figuring out how they test best, or how they do their work best, and making that environment more student-friendly for each student in the district.
So, I want to see academic success for all students, and as a board member, my job is to ensure that we have the policies that support our teachers and students, creating a positive learning environment. I also ensure that we can afford to provide the staff, facilities, and materials to provide programs for all students to succeed. It's important to acknowledge talented, gifted, and special education, and giving them the specialized programs so they can feel accomplished and confident in their future paths. Lewis Central has done a very good job of partnering with Iowa Western, providing more college credit classes to further a student's educational path, and we will keep exploring for more. The partnerships through local trades have been a great alternative for students, helping them prepare for the future also.
We read our Gaby's out for reading questions, and she had a requirement to attend, she wanted to be here as long as she should, but she has prepared a couple of written responses to these questions. I believe academics, she considers them as reliable people and reliable, and providing them tools, support, and continuing education assessment. This is the college's strong judge of coaching, utilizing data for interventions, increasing student engagement with peer meetings, or feedback groups, expanding on STEM, and career exploration opportunities.
I have always been impressed with Lewis Central when it comes to academics and their work at elevating student learning. I attended board meetings for quite a few years before I was elected to the board. At the board meetings, I listened to the teachers present to the board. I heard how Lewis Central was following state standards way back in the day in our curriculum before the state mandate deadline date when they were due. Other schools I know in the area hadn't even started. As a board member, I depend on the professionals. Our teachers and administrators know education. This is their career. They do research and look at the data to see what the metrics are to show students learning. A few teachers will try and compare programs or curriculum to see how it works before a core group decides what's best for students' learning, before it's presented to the board for approval. I would continue to listen to the professionals, look at our student data, encourage more STEM courses and trade courses, more rigor in our curriculum for all grade levels, and support the continuation of the learning growth of all students in all areas.
So, I did a little research into the current academic achievement at Lewis Central. According to the state's website, the middle school is listed as commendable, so good job, middle school. The high school is listed as acceptable, but unfortunately, Titan Hill is listed as needs improvement. So, I think our goal should be for everyone to be listed as commendable, so we need to look at the factors that affect student achievement. One is class size, the larger the class size, achievement tends to go down. Another is attendance. Students who have chronic absenteeism, which I believe now we say is more than 5%, have lower achievement. Another is looking at the curriculum. Is the curriculum meeting the needs of all students? Another is looking at behaviors in the classroom. Are there behaviors in the classrooms that are interfering with the learning of the students? Classroom culture, what's that like? We also need to look at the needs of the staff, who are trying to provide interventions, which are now required of every student who tests below where they need to be. Do they have the time, and do they have the resources to provide those interventions for all of those students on a daily basis?
So, we might have a little bit of conflicting data, but I also have the middle school at outstanding, but high school and Titan Hill actually said it needs development related to IEPs, students with IEPs, and it's actually marked targeted for two years in a row now. That's something that I struggle with dearly, and I'm not saying that it's not because the teachers aren't doing what they need to. I believe we have a fabulous staff. I believe that we want, that we have teachers that want to do more, but I have heard from staff that they do struggle at sometimes speaking their minds and being able to approach administration, to be able to give their opinions, dare I say, without some sort of retaliation, and it's not something you want to hear when you're working with staff on a regular basis. One thing I can say is I appreciate the fact that Lewis Central has made an effort to look at the curriculum at a three-year interval rather than five years. That was a huge step in the right direction. I believe we need to rely heavily on our teachers, they are our front line. We need to get their buy-in, their support, they're the ones that are teaching the material day in and day out. I understand bringing a group of people together to look at curriculum, but honestly, everybody should have a say in what's being taught to the students, so, thank you.
I think with that said, I think we just need to continue to recognize specifically when children need early intervention. I feel like we do a good job catching that. I also feel that we're successful because we have high-quality educators, so the more, you know, retention we have with our amazing teachers and staff, the better our students will learn. And I think that kids are successful right now in our district because they have provided with Central, and they want to do well for themselves. So, by continuing to provide top-of-line educators and academic programs, I think that's how we can continue to elevate our learning experiences for our students.
Question four, starting with your third shuttle. High school staff are essential to student success. What strategy would you support to retain exceptional teachers and support staff in a competitive labor environment?
I know one of the best things at Lewis Central is our exceptional staff. People stay at jobs if they feel heard and valued. We have great teachers, great support staff, and great administrators here at LC. I see the commitment and dedication to our students. All these people don't settle, but they keep working to make sure all students learn and succeed. If we want them to stay, we need to provide every employee with a good work environment, including facilities. For teachers, there are opportunities for leadership roles. We give them time for personal development, time for collaboration, planning, and planning, which I hope empowers them to feel like they do have a voice here at LC. If they don't feel that, then that does need to change. We have mentor, teacher mentors for new teachers to the district. We're working at providing competitive pay for all our staff. Everyone at LC needs to feel their purpose on our campus so they realize everyone makes a difference in a student's life. Lewis Central has a proud past and a good reputation. We want good people to want to stay here at Lewis Central for long term, so we will always look at ways to support everyone. Together, like our motto, motto, we inspire excellence.
It is true, especially with the teacher shortage, as I said before, we want Lewis Central to be the absolute best place to come to work. I do have a pretty good pulse, I know a lot of teachers, I've spoken with a lot of teachers. I think one thing that needs to be looked at is the evaluation system, they use the Danielson system. I've had a lot of veteran teachers who are feeling very demoralized right now, because people have been coming into their classroom and telling them that they're basic, and I know as a veteran teacher, if I'd been rated excellent my whole life, and now people are telling me I was basic, I can see where they're feeling that way. Teaching right now is really, really hard. I've done it for 35 years, it's nothing like it was when I began, the whole thing is just different. Looking at keeping class sizes manageable. When my mom taught, 40-some years, she had 35 kids in a class when she started, and that was doable then. It's not doable now. Anything over 25, in my opinion, is not doable, it shouldn't happen. And it's not just that, also, you need administrators who value and respect the teachers at all times, respect them as professionals, and don't micromanage. I also think it's the board's responsibility to be going to the state and to be contacting the legislators, the governor, I do that all the time, they're probably sick of hearing from me, and telling them, you need to support public education. Public education is essential. We need the money from the state so we can give our teachers a decent living wage.
I can expand on that a little bit. We need to continue to support development training here at the district and offer incentives around continuing education. I believe that paraeducators are foundational and very, very important to the classroom. We currently pay our paraeducators $15 an hour, and we have a one-size-fits-all job description for everything, and it shouldn't be that way. We need to continue to look for grants that the state offers, so that we don't have to rely on just taxpayer money to fund things. I, just out of curiosity, looked, and there was a grant this year for improvements to therapeutic rooms. Lewis Central did not apply for it. We need to continue to utilize the resources that are available to us in order to make improvements that are not just at the cost of the citizens themselves. Grants are there for a reason, we should use them. We need to continue to review overall budgets and find a way to close pay structures for staff in general. It's difficult, and I know that pay is not everything, but when you have a neighboring school district that pays their teachers 10,000 to 15,000 more a year than what we pay, it is difficult. So, we need to find ways to close that gap and to make it more feasible for teachers to look at us. Paraeducators, even in general, they stay, from what I've heard when I've talked to them, because their kids go to school here. Otherwise, they'd go to CB because they pay 18, 19 bucks an hour. So, it's a big difference.
I think that what we need to look at too is the fact that we are a small district, we are not a council of schools, but we sure do want people like we are. With that said, we have been strategic with getting raises to all of our staff. Over the course of the last four years, we have gotten to a place where we can provide insurance for our parents. That was a big victory for us. So, though it's not a ton of money, we did get them up to $50 in the last four years, it does help, obviously, attract them here, but we just need to keep in mind that it has to kind of slow its setting so that we're not outstretching ourselves financially. I think, though, by continuing to look at our pay and other districts, we can keep that in the forefront of our minds, we can continue to be competitive with other schools. I'd like to say too, though, we have the best staff, I think, in Council of Love's. We have zero teaching positions over this time. We keep saying teacher shortages, but thankfully, we don't have that problem here at Lewis Central. And to me, that says something, I think we're doing something right.
So, I agree, as well as that we need to do a consistent analysis of wage and benefits and make sure we're keeping up with the market, but with that, you need to keep your employees happy, your teachers happy. Many times, you can do that just by recognizing them. So, we have great sports, great athletics, great academics here, but how many times are we recognizing the student, which is great, but many times, the teachers get forgotten? So, say that that student made it to state track, how many times was that coach recognized for getting that student to state track? So, just getting a recognition, the people behind the scenes are the teachers, getting them a boost and telling them, thank you, thank you for coming tonight and helping out. I know that's time out of your, you're not, you're not getting paid extra and it's time out of your life. So, just getting extra recognition and thank you from the behind-the-scenes. A thank you for getting that student academically there. I think that would come a long way for keeping the staff here.
All right. I guess luckily, we haven't had this big issue come up here because we do have, we do retain our teachers like up over ninety-five percent. So, I would agree that I do believe we're doing something right. In a highly competitive market, a lot of things come into play. Let's start with wages. We have to pay an attractive wage for qualified teachers. Benefits. We want our teachers to feel secure today as well as tomorrow. A school culture. A positive culture where leadership, community, staff, and students, all are included and strive for success. And the last I'm going to say is branding. A school that always has been with a strong tradition and providing exceptional education. Let's get our brand heard. The more people that can talk positively about our district, the more people want to be a part of our Lewis Central brand.
Well, to begin with, I would look at these two areas, benefits and affordability. Options, retention standards, longevity bonuses, childcare assistance, or tuition we versus we can all discuss. Set forth a failure path with a professional growth as well as competitive professional development.
Question five, starting with Erin Peterson. As this district grows and programs evolve, so do spatial and financial demands. Would you support pursuing a new future school bond in order to further renovations of current facilities and/or build a new school in the near future to accommodate all of the district's changing dynamics and continue to provide the best possible learning atmosphere for our students and working environment for our staff?
I absolutely would. I think that we obviously have to keep in mind that people that don't have kids in the district, I'm sorry, people that don't have kids currently in the district that have aged out or graduated, whatever it is. We have to remember that they are paying for our bonds. But I know that they want to invest in the future of our kids. So, I think that it's absolutely okay to support a bond to help with that specifically, especially on expanding to a new facility. We, we are growing as a district and we have to think further down the line, five, ten, fifteen years. We can't just think about tomorrow and how it's affecting our, ourselves. I know that paying extra money isn't fun, but it's obviously for a purpose. So, yeah, I think that a bond would be okay again for those specific reasons. Now, it has to meet the means. But again, we just have to look on the expanding because I think Lewis Central is a destination school. I can see that, you know, we are growing. We have neighborhoods coming, you know, they're popping up everywhere. There's houses all over. So, the more houses we have, the lesser paying. So, in the end, it does help us. But yes, my answer is yes, I would absolutely support a bond.
Yes, I too would support a bond. I agree with Erin that we have to think of the population in the district that maybe doesn't have any children. Or maybe, like she mentioned, their grandkids are in the school district. Or I have friends that their children go to St. Albert. So, we have to get those people on board to also support a bond because they will be paying it as well as us. So, we have to, as a board, we have to come up with some ways to get those people involved. I feel we also need to do it in phases. I don't think we can ask for one big lump sum. I remember when the first bond came out, the idea of it, and then also voting on it. And I was a single mom in Briarwood and I had three kids. And I thought, "I can't afford this." And, you know, it was a large amount of money being taken out of my pocket. And so, with this, the second one that got passed, I was on board with it. And, you know, I, I would love for, I know we're overpopulated and I know we need to build a new school, so I am definitely on board with it. I just think we need to think of the taxpayers, think of involving and affecting, you know, their wallets and how much can they afford to pay? So, I think a phased system would be the way to go in a bond.
So, yeah, I would support a new bond when it was needed. The last bond, I was the number-one advocate for it. It passed to do critical infrastructure repairs that were pushed off for way too long. If you look around our district, you'll see or feel a difference that that bond has made. Throughout the process, we have posted pictures, budget costs, actual costs, to establish the trust and transparency throughout our district. Are more improvements needed? Absolutely. But my thoughts, this was manageable. In a timely fashion and not being impactful for our community. Phase one completed over twenty-five projects throughout this summer. And it, and no instructional time was lost. Phase two has already started through collaborating with staff and the community members, ensuring that it will make the same positive impact for our future. Now, also, I'll touch on the bond. Lewis Central is very unique. Of the thirty-million-dollar bond that passed, I believe it's only about nine million is what the residents pay because we are surrounded by businesses. Luckily, the businesses take the brunt of it. And the good part is, we get the benefit of having a great district, but they take the brunt of the repayment back, just to be clear.
One question, we have to check this out. I believe that small school districts are a core community and a hundred percent supportive of the future to accommodate the increasing needs for our community, students, and staff. Open houses, virtual tours showing the needs within our facilities could be a great way to achieve that successful bond building.
Yes, I would definitely support this. No one wants taxes raised, ever. We have the lowest tax levy around because over the years, the Lewis Central boards have been fiscally responsible by repairing equipment we have. Patching roofs, patching parking lots, doing what we can without a bond referendum and going to our taxpayers. We completed the last two items on our twenty-year plan with the new transportation building and this auditorium. Yes, we were behind, but we had a superintendent retire. We hired a new superintendent. COVID hit. Dr. Canos was here only three years, so we're preparing to hire another superintendent. And Dr. Brent Hazing accepted our offer and we started moving forward with plans. Thanks to the supporting LC voters, we passed a bond last year. You can already see the improvements, but there is still more to do. And one, as the panel sits here and we talk about wanting more trade programs and more increased academic programs and lower class sizes, how do we do that if there isn't enough room? And we're running out of room now. We have some large class sizes right now. As projected houses and apartments are built in our district, we will see more students in our schools. The LC board, we created a new comprehensive district facility plan. We are transparent with how your bond money for facilities is being spent. Check out the Lewis Central website. We are transparent, sorry. We must keep investing in district schools because that attracts parents who want their children in a great, safe school district. For the older students who want expanded academic programs, trade programs, and great extracurricular activities that LC offers. And as a homeowner, my time's up.
Yes, would I personally support a bond issue? Yes. Obviously, all of us, we wouldn't be running for school board if we didn't want our kids to have beautiful facilities. And I don't think that's really the question that we need to ask. We need to ask, will the taxpayers of Lewis Central in general support a bond issue, especially one large enough to build a new school? As I've been out talking with people, I've talked to maybe two people who have said yes. The majority of them, and it's not because they don't want to support it, it's because their taxes are already really high, the academy's not good, and both elderly people or people who are near retirement, who are going to be on a fixed income, tell me, "We can't afford it." A lot of young families say, "We're already strapped." It's that we would love our kids to go to a brand-new school. We can't afford it. So, I think we not only need to look at funding things through, through bonds, we need to look at funding through things through private donations. In the Council Bluffs Public School, we've got a new early childhood building funded through private donations. We have a stadium funded through private donations. And now, we're working on a new high school for STEM funded through private donations. So, I think we need to expand the possibilities, get creative, and look at different funding sources, not just bonds, in case we can't get a bond issue passed.
So, I will say, yes, yes, because I was proudly on the committee the first time. We tried to go for the ninety-million dollars. You know, as a taxpayer and a homeowner in the district, I'm not sure there isn't anything I wouldn't try to pay to make sure that my kids have the best schools to go to, to learn in, the best environments. Best environments for teachers. Students are there, teachers are there. I mean, it's very, very important. I voted for this last bond. I'd vote for the next bond. Because one thing is, is one day, I'd like to say that our district is sought after for all kids. I would love to one day bring back every student that is on an adaptive learning IEP that is not in our district but in a different school district. Bring them back because we have the facilities to support them. We have the teachers here to support them. We don't have to send them elsewhere to get support. It's not easy as a parent to have three kids that went to school here and pull another one to send them to a different school district. It's hard. It's a very, very difficult decision to make as a parent. I wouldn't wish it on anybody, but when you make those decisions, you make the best decision for the child, not for yourself. So, with that, I, I fully support the next bond, and the next bond, and the next bond. But I also agree, we need to find creative, innovative ways to build new infrastructures that will help everyone.
Well, we do have one question from a current student. So, starting with Doreen Sheple. What experience do you have working in a board setting?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
A student asks, "What experience do you have working in a board setting?"
In a board setting? I've been on the Lewis Central Board for a few years and my experience is that we work well together. We listen, we learn, we encourage our administrators and teachers to come to our board meetings and present. And the one thing I feel that as a board is that we might not always agree, but once the decision is made and the vote is made, you'll support the vote. And I think that with good leadership, with the superintendent we have in place, we, our board is, works well together. And I think that we are doing a lot for Lewis Central and the students.
I was on a board for many years of a private swimming pool here in town and responsible for being fiscally responsible with the money of other people and also served as their president. For the past twelve years, I've been a member of the Council Bluffs Education Association's exec board, also serving as its president and worked with that board.
So, I was a proud board member of the union where I currently work at Metropolitan Utilities District. I was a union steward for years before I became management. Fortunately, they don't let management stay in the union. But I, I believe that there's strong advocacy working between two areas. I'm a huge proponent of unions. I believe they bring a lot of benefit because they hold people accountable for fair and I'll just say fair wages and benefits. Let's, let's just keep it at that. But, you know, as I, I had the opportunity to serve on three committees here at Lewis Central. I sat on two years of oversight committees for budget. And I also sat in on the special education committee that was done over the summer. Honestly, the, the year following, or the summer following, when we moved my son to a different school district. So, I appreciate the fact that the district reached out to us as parents to get our input. I would do it again, continue to do it. But that's my experience.
My experience has been, the last four years, I'm on the Central School Board. I also served on a school board for a little preschool that my kids are getting. But I think what's great about the Lewis Central School Board is we all have differences in opinions, but we do come together and we do vote on things. We do support each other in those decisions. I think that when you take in all the different stances, you grow as a person yourself. So, I don't have all the answers to everything and I don't know everything, but I will absolutely learn. And being on the school board, I have grown as an individual. So, I think that, I think that that's been my experience on the board. I've just, I have grown myself and that's why I'm going for another four years because I have so much more to learn.
So, I actually have no experience with being on a board and I'm actually proud to say that I have been working my way up to this and I have been the quiet bystander, like I said, within the district for fourteen years. I have been able to see gaps that, that make ways. I think we could have many improvements. I feel the board needs a new voice, new ideas, and I think that's something that I can bring. And so, with that, I've been a manager at my, I've been an employer for twenty years, but a manager for ten years, and that's very similar to a board. I have many people reporting to me and I also do one-on-one coachings with them. But I take their ideas and I, and I make it happen, or I listen to their ideas and bring feedback. I'm very open-minded and that's something I can bring to the board as people come and bring their ideas. You know, I, I may not agree with them, but I will listen, I will research, and hopefully we can come to an agreement. So, although I have no experience, I feel I have been working my way up to this and just been working for the right opportunity to, to try for a board position. And I feel this is the right opportunity because my platform being the special needs, a strong voice for the special needs population. And I feel it's just the right opportunity because of the cuts in funding with special needs. And I feel that we need a very strong voice on the board for that population.
I guess mine started out as, I'm a Council Bluffs JC. I worked my way up and started serving on, as vice president and president of the JCs, which is a community-based organization, doing things around the town, development of all the members. And then, I am the newbie of the board. I've been here, just within my first year, I've been here eleven months. Definitely grown. I pride myself on being available, accountable, and I'm pretty transparent. I do a lot of research on any specific project, decision. I'm not a secret vote. I'm going to tell you very clear during the to tell you very clear during the discussion period that this is how I, you know, I look at everything about 900 different angles, and I'm going to tell you how I got there, and hopefully you agree.
At this time, we would like to give each of you a two-minute opportunity to give one final pitch on why you should be elected to the Lewis Central Board of Education. Will
The one thing that I bring to the board is experience. We, it's nice to have someone on the board that knows how things have been, how things we want to improve, things that we've tried and didn't work, not to say it can't be done again, but it's nice to know, have someone on the board that has served and led the board in lots of discussions. The one thing that, when I'm on the board, my only thought is, we do this for the students, and that is having good teachers here for the students. It's having good curriculum, it's having good activities, it's having, how does this affect every vote, everything we do, how does that affect our students? And I know, at one time, our old boardroom, we had handprints from the class of 2003? No, it was 2006. They had their handprints on the wall. They were the kindergartners. And it was really great to sit there, walk into the boardroom, I wasn't on the board at that time, but to walk into the boardroom and see those hands, because that was the reason why we were at the board table. And with the experience I have, I hope that you vote for me, and I am always open. You can email me, call me, I'll take my time and explain things, or if I don't know, I'll direct you to the person who can answer that. And so, I appreciate this time and the questions, and being able to just share a lot of things.
I've always said for probably the last 20 years, someday I'm going to run for school board. It's, I watch a lot of school board meetings, and it's always been astounding to me that there's usually no one on the board who's ever had experience in education. And when you're making decisions for teachers and students, you need somebody there who understands teachers and students. I can guarantee you, I understand teachers and students. That's what I've been doing for 35 years. I know what they need. I know what teachers need to want to feel safe and secure and valued in their job. I know what children need to learn. I want to be that voice for them on the school board, so when a decision's made, I can give real-life plausible reasons that it will, yes, work great for the staff and the students, or, yeah, that's probably not such a great idea for the staff and students because they need a voice. There needs to be somebody there who's actually walked the walk and knows how decisions made by the board are going to affect the everyday happenings in a school building.
So, for me, transparency is important. It goes a long ways with credibility in leadership and understanding that you have a voice when it matters. I don't need to run for school board. Trust me, I'm busy, but I want to run for school board because my kids and your kids mean the world to me. It's important for me to understand how we've gotten to the point where we've gotten as a school district over the years. I can tell you without a doubt, 25-plus years ago, when I was in school, Lewis Central was the sought-after school to go to. It was talked about by everybody. Amazing football program. They do. They've always had an amazing football program. But I want to be known for more than just football. I want to be known for academics for everyone. I want to give every child an opportunity to be able to grow and learn in the district, and I don't want a parent to have to decide whether or not they keep their child in the school district that they live in, or move them elsewhere that has better opportunities. We should be able to have the best opportunities
So, for me, I actually do have a background in education. I have early childhood education background specifically, and I did work in preschools, and I also go to kindergarten at the time. I don't talk a lot about myself specifically, but I have kids for 14 months until I get to college age. So, I have experience. I'm in the trenches with kids. I don't get them all day long anymore, but I absolutely know what it's like to work with kids. I know the challenges that we face, even in my line of work. I would say that I'm a good candidate again for school board because I have three kids in the district, but when they do graduate from the school, I know that if I do stay in Council Bluffs, which I hope I do, that I will still support everything that this district does because of what they've done for my kids specifically, and how they've developed as humans. They're wonderful children, and I know they love it, it's because of our teachers. So, I also want to say I'm a problem solver, I'm approachable. Anytime someone's come to me with a question, or they want me to bring something up to somebody, I am a voice. I can absolutely go up to the principals or the teachers themselves and ask, why is it this way? And I don't believe that just because it is that way, that's not how it always has to be. I think that it's okay to challenge things and, you know, be flexible. So, I've loved my time on the board, and I want to continue it, and I hope that you guys get out and vote for her in the future. Thank you.
So, as I mentioned before, my platform, and it has been since running for this candidacy, is being a strong voice for the special needs population. I was born and raised in Council Bluffs. I've lived here almost 40 years, and I'm a big proponent for Council Bluffs, and I know the community. As I mentioned before, I have an 11th grader here at the high school, a first grader, and a three-year-old. So, I've been within the Lewis Central School District for 14 years, so I have that background as well. I am also not on another board, and so with that, I would make it my top priority. I will be at all the meetings. I will be representing the school board at school events because I'll probably be there with my children. But I feel it's important to be present, to be, you know, known within, like when you walk in the building, oh, she's on the school board, because they know you as a person who's approachable. And I also just feel, let me think really quick. I would just say also, I'm bringing new ideas. So, not being on the board, I think many people have been on the school board and/or have been on other boards, but just bringing new creative ideas. Like I mentioned, I've noticed lots of gaps and room for improvement, and so that's something I can also bring to the school board. So, just with that, remember to vote LL for LC on November 4th. Thank you.
Like I said, I guess I pride myself on being available to anybody. I think I'm here at the school or on the grounds somewhere around three days a week, I think. One thing that I learned, or was very grateful to learn, I guess, in 11 months is, is the communication between the board and our teachers. I don't think there's any teachers that can't come up to any one of us and have, you know, with an issue, whether it's with the facilities, you know, or maybe it's a staff member with the maintenance department, you know, matter of fact, I called them on Monday, and the problem's already addressed. So, the communication from the top, all the way across the whole spectrum, I think is very good. So, I was really happy to hear that, or see that, I should say, or be a part of it. I hope you vote for me. I'm always approachable. It doesn't matter if I'm out mowing my grass, out to dinner. If you have a question, comment, feel free to ask. And I'm a problem solver. Like I said, I advocated for the $30 million bond, got it to pass. We did 25 major projects. We're half-done. Now, we face a middle school project that is very complex, but we're going to tackle it head-on, and we're going to make it ADA accessible, which was part of the bond. You know, the new playgrounds, I advocated for the accessibility on that. That's why it ended up with turf on there. You can wheel any wheelchair. Have a good
As this concludes my form, I want to thank all our candidates for their time, thoughtful responses, and willingness to serve the Lewis Central community. Thank you, S. Thank you, S and L2, our audience for being here, showing your support, and engaging in the future of schools. A reminder that election day is November 4th. Please make sure your voice is heard by voting. Thank you again for joining us this evening for the Lewis Central.